Welcome, welcome to this special meeting of the Parks and Recreation Commission. This Tuesday evening, September 19th, 2023. I call this meeting to order. Please, everyone. Thank you. Please join me, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Massey?
Present.
Commissioner Kiapi?
Present.
Commissioner Held?
Vice Chair Wolnick?
Present.
Chair Fields?
Present.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening and welcome. We are holding meetings in hybrid mode. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request to speak slip and submit to the recording secretary, either Courtney or Liliana. If participating remotely, please use the raise hand function feature, excuse me, in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. Phone-in participation can be done by calling 408-638-0968 with the conference ID and pass code referenced in the agenda. Press *9 to raise your hand to be called on and *6 to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close public comment for that specific item. Item number one, approval of the regular meeting minutes of the August 2nd, 2023 meeting. Do I have a motion and a second? Thank you, Commissioner Massey.
Candid.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaife. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Massey?
Aye.
Commissioner Kiapi?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wolnick?
Aye.
Chair Fields?
Aye.
Motion's passed, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the commission at this time. State law prevents us from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided later in the agenda. Do we have any public comments at this time?
Chair Fields, we do, we have one public comment. I'd like to remind those joining us through Zoom, if you'd like to comment at this time, please raise your hand.
And this is public comment for non-agendized items. Okay, let's do three minutes per public comment.
Hold on, I'm sorry, one second. Let me turn on your mic.
One moment.
There you go.
Hi, Rich Hedges from District 4. I rise tonight to say that I received some sad news by email that Chris Massey is actually leaving our fair city. He's given so much to this city. He was on the, I think, at least two terms on the Planning Commission and other commissions within this city. He's given so much public service and he's going to be missed. I'm sorry you're leaving, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, I will join Councilmember Hedges in saying that Commissioner Massey has done many wonderful things and contributed as a great citizen to San Mateo and we will wish him well and our loss will certainly be another community's gain. With that, are there any other public comments?
There are no other public comments, Chair Fields.
Excellent, then I would like to close that public comment period. Let's see. Very good. We will start with a staff presentation followed by an applicant presentation clarifying questions from the commission and then public comments and then we'll take it back to the commission for additional comments. The applicant will be given up to 15 minutes to present and members of the public will be given one to three minutes to speak depending on the number of speakers. The applicant may also be given up to five minutes at the end to respond to public comments. Once the public comment period is closed, we will turn the commission, we will return to the commission for final comments. The item is informational and therefore there will be no action taken this evening. I want to make sure that everyone is clear on that. This item is informational, therefore no action will be taken this evening. I would like to introduce Summer Smith, our Associate Planner for the City of San Mateo, and Manira Sandhir, Planning Manager and Zoning Administrator.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Fields and members of the Park and Recreation Committee Commission. Summer Smith, Associate Planner here to provide the staff presentation for 1855 South Norfolk Street, which is the Fish Market Development Project, PA number 2022-099. All right, let's get started. Okay, so I just wanted to start out by going over the different items that the Parks and Rec Commission reviews. So they review and provide comments on projects adjacent to public parks, recreation facilities, or Marina Lagoon, as is, as is in the case tonight. They also review and comment on planning applications impacting public parks, landscape resources, or public recreation facilities in which are appealed or receive final approval from the Planning Commission or City Council. Since this project is located along Marina Lagoon and includes publicly accessible open space along the lagoon, the Parks and Recreation Commission will review and provide focused comments on aspects of this project that relate to Marina Lagoon and the proposed publicly I want to start by providing an overview of where we are in the planning application process. The preliminary application, which included a neighborhood meeting and a Planning Commission studies session, was completed last summer and the formal application was submitted at the beginning of this year. The plans for the formal application are currently under review and now is a chance for all applicable boards and commissions to provide comments and solicit public feedback about the project. Please note that we are here today to gather input on the project as it relates to the publicly accessible open space in Marina Lagoon. No decisions will be made during this meeting tonight. Additionally, I will provide additional information on the next steps of the planning application process at the conclusion of this presentation. The project before the Planning Commission this evening is for a multifamily residential building located on South Norfolk Street between Susan Court and Fashion Island Boulevard. It's highlighted here in green. This map also illustrates the location of the city's Marina Branch Library, highlighted in blue to the north, as well as the Parkside Plaza Shopping Center, highlighted in red to the west of the project site. Here's an aerial, oops, sorry, excuse me. One second, I'm sorry. Using two hands to control here, I'm sorry. Okay, here's an aerial more specifically showing the project site, which consists of two parcels totaling 3.46 acres. The site also contains a 20-foot city maintenance easement along Marina Lagoon, which allows the city use for public access. The general plan's land use designation of this site is neighborhood commercial, consistent with the site's zoning designation of neighborhood commercial, or C1. The project is also located within the Shoreline Park specific plan area and is within the general plan's shoreview planning area. This slide, I'll go over some photos showing the existing adjacent uses. The first row shows the existing uses on the site. From left to right is the Fish Market Restaurant, a furniture warehouse, and an area that has historically been used as a temporary sales or seasonal use area. The row, the second row shows the Parkside Plaza Shopping Center, the Marina Branch Library, and the Harbor Town condominiums, which are to the east of Marina Lagoon. The last row shows examples of typical homes found in single-family neighborhoods to the north. Now I'll go briefly describe the project trio. This project is a five-story mixed-use planned development consisting of approximately 4,9,500 square feet and 260 rental units spread across two buildings. The north building is located on the northern side of the site and consists mainly of residential units with a small 1,200-square-foot ground floor coffee shop or cafe component. The south building is located on the southern side of the site and is proposed to be exclusively residential units. The project proposes 324 off-street parking stalls with 12 stalls dedicated for customers of the cafe and guests of the apartments. Long-term residential bike stalls are provided in the parking garage for residents and short-term bike racks are spread throughout the site in the public use areas. Private residential open space areas include the second floor's terrace in the north building, a rooftop deck in the south building, an at-grade open space and pool area to the rear of both of the buildings. Publicly accessible open space is provided within the 20-foot city maintenance easement along with, along Marina Lagoon. The western boundary of the easement is shown here by the red dotted line. Here's a roadmap of the upcoming slides focused on applicable codes and policies. The next slides will cover the general plan, followed by the San Mateo Municipal Code, and ending with local plans and policies. The general plan's land use element and conservation open space and parks and recreation element provides policies, actions, and goals that address the importance of open space and the activation of the land adjacent to Marina Lagoon. The land use element designates the project site as part of the shoreview planning area and specifically requires redevelopment to maximize public access along the waterfront of the subject property. San Mateo Municipal Code requires a 20-foot setback from the top of the bank of any watercourse such as Marina Lagoon. No structures are permitted to be located within this setback area. Currently as proposed, portions of the pool enclosure and decking and portions of the south building encroach into the required 20-foot setback. Modifications to the project will be required to remove all structures from this area. The zoning code is Title 27 of the Municipal Code. Zoning Code Chapter 27.62 contains requirements for planned developments, which are intended to enable flexibility of design and development and provide permanently reserved usable open This chapter requires residential planned developments to provide open space in recreational areas. It also requires open spaces to be landscaped in accordance with the applicable standards and policies adopted by City Council, which we will go over in the next several slides. Additional policy documents applicable to the project site include the Shoreline Park specific plan. One purpose of this plan is to provide as much public access as possible to the shoreline. The project site is included in Area 4 Marina Lagoon, which requires private development to improve the lagoon banks, including provision and installation of public access and other park and recreation facilities. The developer's contribution, yeah, the developer's contribution policy contains a section specifically for Marina Lagoon. The policy mandates that developers adjacent to Marina Lagoon protect banks, including installing landscaping, and also that they dedicate bike and pedestrian paths, and also beautify and maintain the banks as directed by the city. As I briefly discussed earlier, the neighborhood of the, the neighborhood meeting of the pre-application was held on June 22nd of last year, followed by the Planning Commission study session, which was held on July 26, 2022. Seven public comment letters have been received for this meeting up until 4:00 PM today. Comments included support of publicly accessible park-like amenities along Marina Lagoon or some amenities like green space. So at this time, staff asked the Parks Commission to provide input on the project as it relates to Marina Lagoon with specific focus on the open space and public access proposed for the project, the building design and how it interfaces with the lagoon and open space. Additionally, staff will provide information on the results of the shadow study. As required by the Shoreline Park specific plan, the project proposes publicly accessible open space along Marina Lagoon. Two open space options have been provided for the project, which are described in detail following this slide. So we'll start with the publicly accessible open space option one. Open space option one is shown here in more detail. It proposes gated open space along the lagoon that includes a variety of amenities that will be attractive to the residents of the apartments, patrons of the library, and the community as a whole. Amenities include a five-foot meandering path, along with landscaping and trees, benches, proposed locations for public art, and plazas. The project also proposes to relocate the, relocate the existing dock to the center of the site. Gated and fenced public pedestrian access to the lagoon and open space are proposed on two paths with entries on Fashion Island Boulevard, which is the photo on the right, and Susan Court seen on the photo in the, in the left of the screen. There is also a central gate that expands the space between the two buildings. The applicant proposes to unlock the gate at Fashion Island Boulevard and roll back the central gate and the cafe gate along Susan Court for the hours the open space would be open. Public access hours for parks and recreation facilities are at the discretion of the parks, discretion of the Director of the Parks and Recreation Department. However, typical park hours are from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The proposed access to the public open space conflicts with several elements, sorry, several of our adopted plans and policies and standards. The presence of perimeter gates, even if unlocked or rolled back, would give the impression of a gated community and would create a barrier, whether direct or perceived, which may prevent members of the public from accessing the space. This would effectively decrease access to Marina Lagoon in conflict with the general plan and Shoreline Park specific plan and therefore would be inconsistent with city policies. Staff recommends improving access by providing a predominant pedestrian entry along South Norfolk Street. Having a prominent pedestrian entry here, along with signage or an identifying landmark, will make the public aware that the open space exists and that they are invited to use it. While the open space has an appealing design, it should be noted that the five-foot-wide path proposed by the applicant is significantly less than the 12-foot combined pedestrian bike path that has been established along other portions of Marina Lagoon shoreline. Community development and Parks and Recreation staff recommend that the path be designed to allow for future extensions on both sides of the property and any public accessible amenities such as the picnic plaza and benches to be located within a public access easement. Now we'll move on to open space option two. This design proposes a six-foot wide, six-foot-wide decomposed granite path with landscaping to the east of the path on the residential portion of the site. Additionally, the applicant has removed the dock relocation from this option, leaving it in its current location. In contrast to the first option, which gates the entire rear open space area, this design proposes to gate the cafe and all residential areas facing the lagoon. This option would also include the central gate, however, the public access paths along Susan Court and Fashion Island Boulevard would not be gated or fenced. As currently proposed, staff does not support this option because it does not meet the intent of the public accessibility and open space policies and standards found in the general plan, zoning code, Shoreline Park specific plan, or the developer's contribution policy, which were provided earlier on in this presentation. Unlike option one, this option does not contain amenities or enhanced landscaping, with the exception of the path. While this, while this design provides a slightly wider path along the lagoon, the material of decomposed granite is of a lower quality than the concrete shown in option one and is still less than the 12-foot-wide path established along other portions of the Marina Lagoon shoreline. This plan also shows that the specialized pavers will not be installed throughout the pedestrian path. Further, the gates that would enclose, that would enclose the residential use in cafe create a physical separation between the public and private spaces. This separation, coupled with the decorative pavers landscaping and landscaping found on the residential side of the property, caused the public open space to appear bare and does not appear cohesive with the overall development. So now we'll dive into the building design. We'll all provide an overview of the architectural styles and how the development interfaces with the waterfront. Here you'll see the rear elevations of the north and south buildings, as well as the rear of the overall development. A detailed rendering of the north building is shown here. The north building is best described as early Mediterranean revival and includes a residential bike and water sports room on the ground floor of the left side of the building, a proposed cafe or coffee shop on the right side of the building adjacent to the library. There is also a ground floor recessed area along the middle of the building that provides room for an in-ground swimming pool for residential use and is surrounded by a six-foot glass A detailed rendering of the area behind the Arrival Plaza is shown here. Here you can see the central gate, landscaped area, and the centrally located dock. Now we have a detailed rendering of the south building. The south building represents the canary architectural style fashioned after old canning warehouses and incorporates projecting and recessed walls that break the long building into smaller sections and provide space for, and provide space for rest and picnic areas. A residential co-working space is provided on the right-hand corner of the building and two common egress doors from the building offer access to Marina Lagoon open space. One is next to the co-working space and the other along Fashion Island Boulevard. Now I'll just go over the results of the shadow study. So the longest shadows cast during, are cast during the winter for this project. This, these renderings depict the shadows on December 24th, 21st, or the winter solstice. And just a brief overview, at 9:00 AM during the winter, the shadows cover portions of the yards and single-family homes on Susan Court. And they're also cast over the majority of the open space along the south building and pool. At 12:00 AM, sorry, 12:00 PM, the development, development shadows touch the library and cover nearly all of the open space, except for the pedestrian path adjacent to the north building. And additionally, at 3:00, at 3:00 PM, the development shadow reaches approximately halfway across Marina Lagoon and covers a portion of the library and all open space along the lagoon, except for the Arrival Plaza and relocated dock. And then the shortest shadows in opposite of the winter are cast during the summer. And the renderings here depict the shadows on June 24th, 21st, summer equinox. And here you'll see that the, that the shadows show that the development will cast the shortest shadows in the summer with no shade on the library and single-family residences and no changes to the sun access for the lagoon. The longest shadow cast during the summer is onto South Norfolk Street, which is only shaded until 12:00 PM. So next I'll just go over the items for discussion that the Parks and Rec Commission may want to provide input on to the applicant and staff. And please keep in mind the policies that were discussed earlier regarding the open space and development along Marina Lagoon, such as the general plan, the developer's contribution policy, and the Shoreline Park specific plan. Okay, so the first item for the topic for discussion is open spaces and public access considering the following components, which is the gate and fencing versus signage and other security measures, public access locations, the pedestrian path, the width and material, landscaping of the open space, dock relocation, and any other components that the commission may wish, may wish to comment on. Second is just comments on the building design along Marina Lagoon. If the commission has any comments or input they want to provide about the interface between the building, open space, and Marina Lagoon, that would be the time to provide it. And lastly, the conclusions of the shadow study, if the commission has any questions on that, but that's really just an informational item to provide for you all. Okay, so next steps in the process include finalizing the project description and site plan to resolve, to resolve any code issues. Please note that this can take multiple review cycles and is often the longest part of the planning application process. Next would be to complete the environmental review, which will provide information on other topics of interest that the community and commission might have questions in or want to provide comments on. It'll include elements like traffic, noise, air quality, biological resources, and hydrology and water quality, for example. If the environmental report finds that the project causes any significant negative impacts, staff will work to introduce conditions of approval to mitigate these impacts. Once both the site plan and environmental review have been finalized, there'll be a period specifically dedicated to receiving public comments about the project and any Okay, and then at the end of the comment period, the Planning Commission and City Council will hold public hearings, at which time all public comments will be provided to the bodies for review and consideration before a final decision is made by the City Council. And then lastly, please note that the completion of the environmental review and scheduling of the public hearing won't happen for some time, so I encourage you all to check out the project's what's happening and development page for updates. You'll find the link to the website down below. Here you'll find all upcoming meetings, the newest versions of plans that the applicant has submitted, as well as documents when they're available to review, such as the environmental report. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions or comments the commission may have. And then the applicant is also here to provide a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to remind everyone, we will be hearing a presentation from Mike Field from Windy Hill. He'll have up to 15 minutes to present, then we'll bring it back to the commission for questions, and then we'll be taking public comment on the matter and then back to the commission for comments on the project. So with that, I would like to introduce Mike Field from Windy Hill, and I would just like to take a point of personal privilege and say that I, Sarah Fields, plural, am not related to Mike Field, singular. And with that, I will hand it over to Mike Field.
I do have a sister, Sarah Singular, but yes, we are not related, at least not to our knowledge. our knowledge, maybe back many moons ago. So thanks for having us tonight, first Parks and Rec meeting. So I'll try and, you know, not make it a Planning Commission meeting, because that's what I'm used to, or a City Council meeting. But thank you for having us tonight. We're excited about this project. The opportunity for public interface is really exciting here vis-à-vis what's there now. And so really, there's, one of the reasons we're before you tonight is there's a few key areas where we have some significant difference of opinion with staff. And so I'm going to highlight some of those things for your benefit, so that, you know, we can just provide that sort of a direct input. So a little bit about us, we have built several developments in the downtown area, and most of our projects, you know, we work very closely with the community to try and make that they're additive and that the impacts are as minimal as possible. Obviously, any form of development creates impact, and so we do our best to try and mitigate those impacts, to try and work with, you know, the specific neighborhoods we are developing in, to try and make sure that we can do our very best to net-net create some improvements that the community can be happy with. And so I'm going to talk to you about what some of those improvements are specifically with this project, but we have projects up and down the peninsula, in Palo Alto, Redwood City, San Carlos, and we really enjoy being here in the mid peninsula, which is where we do all of our business. So I'm going to skip through some of these slides quite quickly, because they're repetitive with the staff's presentation. You know the site, it's right next to the library. You'll see some arrows and some numbers. It's going to be tough, because I'm scrolling past this page to then the pictures, but if you go back in the packet, you'll be able to actually see where these camera shots were taken from. There's a few things to highlight on the site plan, and one is, oh, we have an overpass immediately adjacent. We have 260 homes that are going to be proposed and built here. Security for our residents is a non-negotiable. So the project is not buildable without security for the residents. And so one of the things that we designed right out of the gates was this very impressive public interface along this waterfront that directly connected to the library, because we saw an opportunity here to really create something special, where someone can be over at the retail getting some food, walk over and sit on some benches behind the coffee shop, eat along the waterfront, and this can really be a very interactive space and site. But our main priority is that during the night, when it's dark out, that this site needs to be secure. And we're going to show you some pictures of why, and I think if you were to go down to this area, you could discover some of those reasons for yourself. But this is the library, and so the landscape design option one that you saw really proposes to connect the library with this whole waterfront in front of the project. And you'll see in between the library and the main building is an archway that will have signage on, attracting members of the community from the residential neighborhoods to enter the project at that point. Now, there will also be another access point at the overpass, secondary, not the ideal access spot, obviously. We'd rather people come all the way around in between the main building and the library, but it is nevertheless an access point where folks who are coming across the overpass can also enter into the project site. So this is the overpass area, and this is what it looks like today, and you'll notice there's various aspects of this area that we are not in control of. We aren't in control of if someone is sleeping under them, we aren't in control of anything that goes on in this area. This is public area. And when it starts to interface with the residential project and the significant investment that we're looking to make along the waterfront, we're very happy to have a general public in this space when they want to use it, which is predominantly during daylight hours. But during the night hours, we are not open to having general public access, really because we need to protect the residents, and we also don't want to install lighting that would keep this area safe, to the extent we would need to have lighting shining into the residential homes, shining across the waterway into other people's homes. If this were a publicly accessible park on private property, we would be responsible for security lighting, security, keeping people out all hours of the night, and that's just not a responsibility that I think is fair, given the investment we're willing to make here, to put that on us. So here's some additional pictures of what's going on around the underpass, and again, areas we have no control of and no access to, and no ability to enforce what goes on in these areas that are immediately adjacent to the project site. So I think all of us acknowledge this is a very unique waterfront location. It's incredible, the neighborhood is incredible, it's such a unique place. And we understand that, you know, any new development project is received with mixed reviews, and so our major investment in the waterfront is to try and create that amenity that makes it worth it at the end of the day. And I also think that we, as all Bay Area residents, acknowledge we need more housing, and this is a site that's zoned for office. And so do we want another office building here? No, we don't. It's not a good place for an office building, but it's a phenomenal place for a residential area. So I'm going to skip through this really quickly, and you can correct me if I misspoke about anything. Adjacent constraints directly adjacent to Fashion Island, 92 overpass, which we're all aware of. I'm just going to skip through that one super fast, unless someone objects. 260 residential units. We split the buildings, and we hid all the parking. So that's at significant expense. This is called a wrap apartment building, so you won't see any of the cars. The units wrap around the garage, the garage is inside and invisible to the general public. We put a café on the ground floor closest to the library. Again, that archway entrance is immediately adjacent to the café and encourages public use and access and interaction between the already public amenity of the public library. There's tons of street trees, tons of landscaping, a very elegant pathway that goes through the project, and there's one vehicular area, and that is in between the two buildings, where staff discussed a fence. That fence is fixed, it will never open. So that's one difference from what staff said to what we're proposing. We're willing to have the two side entrances, we are not willing to have the public access in between the two buildings, because that is our main and only vehicular access point, and we don't want interaction between the general public and vehicles at that point. And I can show you more of that on the site plan. So here's the site plan, and you can see the large pathway we've created on the library cul-de-sac, and we'll show you some elevations of that that show that archway amenity space. This space is completely open, with the exception of a glass surround the pool. So again, it's not metal, it's a very inviting safety barrier at the pool, so that, for obvious reasons. But the rest of the open space, when it's open during the daylight hours, will be completely accessible to everyone, residents, general public, et cetera. The main central access point, you'll see there's two garage access points, one on the right and one on the left. You'll see that any pedestrian coming through the middle would need to engage with cars. It's silly, there's no reason to have an access point there for the general public when just to the left and just to the right, we have adequate access. And we don't want to have that engagement there. And the other access point, it's hard to see on this site plan, but it's over along the overpass, and we'll go to that. So this zooms in, the bottom right picture is the archway I've been referring to. You can see it's not a narrow element, it's very significant, it's very broad, and it's very inviting. And so that is the main public access point to this phenomenal new waterfront amenity space. And again, it connects to the library via a concrete path that we've proposed, and then there's a little rotunda area as you first enter the site, and the café is right there on the hard corner. So a really engaging space, especially relative to the current amenity of the library. And this on the bottom right gives you an idea of what the access will be over from the overpass area, and so that's the kind of landscape environment that you'll be entering once you leave the public sidewalk onto the site. And these are some renderings of that middle access area with the gated point. Now, a major design feature of the project is that when you pass by the project, or when you're at the retail center looking at the buildings, we wanted the buildings to be separate, and we wanted there to be a visual cue in between the two buildings to the waterfront. That's why that fence is artistic in nature, you can see through it, but it's not of cheap materials like a chain link or something like that. It's high-quality, but you can also still see through that fence that secures the vehicular area between the two buildings. So this pathway area is the alternative, if we are not able to secure the waterfront at night, then we will erect a secure zone around the buildings that is outside of the easement area. So the point of contention here is really that this easement area has been historically established as a maintenance area. We're intensifying that easement to allow full public access, and we're willing to agree to that. But what we aren't willing to agree to is to have an unsecured area all around the apartment building. So that path would be outside on the lagoon side of a fence, and on the apartment side of the path would be a secure fence that secures the entire backside of the apartment community. Not the ideal solution from our perspective, but really the alternative solution if we can't secure the courtyard during the night. Obviously, you know, we're excited about the opportunity to provide a large community in San Mateo. There aren't a lot of these, certainly not in these particular areas. This lagoon area is a place where I know so many people enjoy living, and it's exciting for us, immediately adjacent to a retail center, to be able to provide this type of environment for a lot of other potential residents, not just for those that are currently there today. And of note, this area, although it's not on the train, provides a lot of transit options. And so that's one of the other reasons why it is a fantastic area for a community like this. We are partnering with the folks who are selling the fish market. They've owned this property for a really long time, they are moving on in years and in business, and so this was something that they had envisioned and something that they were excited about. And I think that's it.
Excellent, with a whole minute to spare. So thank you very much, Mr. Field. I would also just like to ask, if you're in the gallery and you have to have an extended conversation, please take it into the lobby, out of respect for the person presenting. So again, thank you. Now we'll bring it to Mr. Field, you might not be done, we may have questions for you. And we appreciate that. With that, I will say, how about Commissioner Massey, if you have any questions?
I'd like to pass for the moment, and maybe you could come back to me after, depending on what everybody else asks.
Very well. Commissioner Walnick, any questions?
Do have questions. All right, so I'm familiar with Norfolk, I'm not as familiar with the backside of this property, so I want to understand a little bit more about this path. So after the library, it's private property that the path basically can't continue at this point, or is that anchored?
So, yeah, on either ends of the path are residential homes. So in order for the path to continue, well, there's the library and then residential homes, and then of course, you have the overpass on the other side, so the path can't continue there, unless you were to build it underneath the overpass. But in order for the path to continue beyond the library, you would have to take private property in order to let the path continue beyond that. So I think it's pretty unlikely that the path will continue beyond the library, certainly in my lifetime.
To the chair, I just want to note that the policies that were discussed in staff's presentation do provide the same requirement for public improvements in open space to be publicly accessible for any redevelopment along the entire lagoon.
Got it, thank you for that. And then I'm remembering a discussion a couple, I don't know how long ago, before your time unfortunately, about a partnership between the library and the Parks Department in redeveloping that site, because the library is going to be redeveloped. Is that still in the works?
So my understanding is there is a project to do improvements to the Marina Library. The Parks Department maintains landscaping outside of that area.
And through the chair, if I may add to that, so the project, the improvements at the library are only of a structural nature. At this point, there is no current proposal to expand the library or redevelop the site.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so am I to understand that basically six feet in option two is the widest we can get that path? I mean, is there any other trade-offs in the development that we could get that path to be wider?
Yeah, so if you look at the photographs, the photorealistic photographs of this park area, the meandering pathway is surrounded by benches, landscape, and other things to make the area inviting. And so I understand that at some areas along the lagoon, there might feel the need to have a very wide path. We're doing something, in my view, that's far superior to creating an excessively wide path by creating the built-in benching environments, the areas for people to stop and sit, to eat. It's a very well-thought-out experience, as opposed to having a big wide path that goes through a space that's surrounded by lawn or bushes or, you know, vine.
But the...
So to make the path bigger, we lose benches, and we lose other aspects of the amenity area that I think are more important from our perspective than having a wider walking path.
Okay, and so that's the difference between the five-foot path and the six-foot path, correct?
No, so the difference between the two paths is the five-foot path is an area that is publicly accessible during the day, but is not publicly accessible at night. The six-foot path option is an area that's publicly accessible 24/7. Those are the two options.
Okay, but both options creep into the easement, right?
Both, well, the easement area is fully designed and landscaped, there just can't be buildings in the easement area, and there aren't buildings in the easement area.
Okay. Through the chair, I just wanted to provide staff's comments on that question. So there, as the staff has looked at it now, and based on our current policies and plans that we have in place, there is not necessarily a reason that we see currently that the path could not be expanded. The reason staff is asking for that option is to, you know, expand the connectivity of this trail to what could be something great, like the shoreline trail is now currently. It's also important when we're looking at this long-term to maintain a connection to the library. There are residential, single-family neighborhoods on the south side of the bridge, and they also need to access the library, and so having that connection in the future and also providing room to further develop that path... that path to allow for this connectivity is something that we look for as a long-term goal.
And just so I understand that the staff is, is talking about a, a different option than what's before us to make that path wider.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all of my questions for now, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wallnick. Commissioner Kayapi.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Very good. I do have a couple of questions, several questions about the width of the pathway, which I think Commissioner Wallnick addressed. I do have a question that's sort of beyond the scope of this commission, but I did want to clarify. I believe it was on slide 10, you said that the, there were going to be 15% affordable units. Can you go to that, back to that slide?
In the-
Because the math didn't add up.
In my presentation?
No, no, in the staff presentation.
It's probably base density.
Yeah, so as Liliana pulls it up, I can just explain that the, that the 15% of affordable housing, 26 units, that's based on the base density, what is, what is allowed for the residential plan development. So a residential plan development is allowed 50 units per acre, and so in order to-
Quite familiar with that, those numbers.
So in order to go above that, they have to provide a certain level of affordable housing. And so the number of 260 units is that base density plus the additional units that the, that the development gets for including those affordable housing units.
Okay, I'm sorry, try that again, because 15% of 260 would be 39 units.
Right, okay, so we'll take, do a little math problem. So if you take, the site is 3.46 acres. So the base density that's allowed under a residential plan development is 50 units per acre. So you would multiply 50, 50 units times the acreage. That does not get you 260 units.
I see what you're saying, so the 15% is, is on, is based on that original number, not the total.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate you clarifying that. A question that I also had was about the types of plants that you intend to plant. The greenery looks very lovely in renderings, renderings always look lovely. But I'm curious if you've engaged a landscape architect, or an arborist, and, and what the plan is there, because I know we have a lot of questions around how we relate. Again, I would ask, if you need to have a conversation, please go to the lobby. We've, we've had a lot of back and forth around water and making sure the water stays where it needs to stay. So my question is around planting and what the plan is around planting, because the greenery looks nice, but I'd love to know a little more.
Yeah, so Gazardo is our landscape architect, probably one of the best in the Bay Area. And the project will comply with all C3 water retention and usage requirements that any new development in the state of California has to comply with. And we do have, how specific are the planting plans at this point on the submittal? I'm not sure how specific, like if each plant species is called out yet, but that's a question for Lisa.
Lisa, please introduce yourself.
Happy to do so. Lisa Ring with Laura Planning, it's a consultant to Windy Hill Property Ventures. Yes, so your plan set does include a variety of information on paving, planting, tree species. So I think as we work through with the planning staff, you'll see that there are specific tree species that are planted, and some of the larger landscaping items are located in the plan set. And then we will continue to work with the staff on the final selection of those. But in, you know, they are all required to be in conformance with the state, like the Welo standards, those kinds of things, you know, drought tolerant, what's appropriate for the site. So all of that is being considered, and you'll see some information on that as we continue to develop that with the staff.
Excellent, thank you.
Through the chair, just to add on to what they said.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so they will continue to develop the plans. Additionally, depending on their final landscape plan or open space plan, this will have to be reviewed by California Department of Fish and Wildlife for a stream bed, stream bed alteration agreement, and they will have additional requirements for the planting along the banks of the lagoon.
Excellent, thank you for that additional information, and thank you, Lisa, for chiming in. I think my last question is probably for Mr. Field. Have you engaged a café tenant, or will you be operating the café? What's sort of the plan around the café? We heard it referenced several times.
We haven't engaged a tenant, but we likely won't be the operator of the café. We'll have a tenant that operates the café.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm not that good of a barista.
You know what, it's a difficult job, so I appreciate you saying that. It looks like Commissioner Wallnick might have an additional question.
I do, thank you, I forgot one. The, it's a question about the material, the decomposed granite, can you, actually, this is a question more for the Parks Department. The shoreline path over at Seal Point Bay Trail, is, is that the material we're talking about, or is this different than that?
Trying to recall, is that not asphalt, or?
No, in places it's, it's more sandy.
Yeah, that's decomposed granite.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, I will close questions from the commissioners, thank you, Mr. Field. And I will ask Lily, how many, we will, we will begin public comment, how many public comments do we have? Actually, if you're, if you're joining us online, please raise your hand if you would like to make a public comment. We'll take a few minutes for that. And then how many slips do we have?
Chair Fields, we have eight folks who have turned in requests to speak slips.
Okay, and how many people are, are joining us online, do you know? I'm sure you do.
We have 20 attendees.
Okay, and how many hands raised?
And so far, we have one person who has raised their hand.
All right, well, I will put out a call again, please, if you are joining us online, please raise your hand if you would like to make public comment on this item. Let's move forward with two minutes per speaker. And let's take a couple of, of public commenters in the gallery, and we will close public comment for those of you joining us online after we hear from a couple of the public commenters who are present with us now. So again, I'll just say, if you're joining us on Zoom, we are taking public comment on the current item, item number two, information on the proposed multifamily planned development at 1-855-SOUTH NORFOLK STREET, also known as the now former fish market site. So let's begin public comment in-
Chair Fields.
In the chambers.
If I may, through the chair. I believe, so we have nine public comments total. So normally that's a three minute, yes.
Ah, so then three minutes.
Sorry.
That's okay, three minutes it is. Well, I was thinking perhaps the many people on Zoom might have something to say, but it appears perhaps they've gotten all their questions answered. Okay, so then with that, three minutes per public comment, and we can get started. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair Fields. We'll be calling Rick Sakuta first, followed by Debbie Madden.
Good evening, Rick Sakuta, Marina Lagoon Action Committee. To date, there have been two public meetings on this subject. At the developers' meeting, there were 70 speakers. At the planning commission, there were 90 speakers. And at the end, there was no acknowledgement of any of the 160 speakers. The commission, the planning commission discussed which shade, what shade of red they preferred in the arches above the windows. So we have a fresh start here. And I haven't spoken to anyone in the audience, I don't know what they're going to comment on. Maybe they're going to complain about the crab cioppino. But I would ask the commission to listen carefully and faithfully to the speakers tonight, and engage in a discussion on their comments, and open a dialogue with the community. I think that would go a long way to restoring the public faith in our system. Thank you.
Now we'll have Debbie Madden, followed by Laura Wood.
Good evening, my name is Debbie Madden, and I'm a resident at 1160 Shoreline, which is directly across the water from this project. And, you know, my comments are about some things that have not been addressed tonight, and I just thought I would throw them out there. The first thing is the, and I know this has been brought up before, and I'm sure this is way too late to even discuss it, but the project does seem extremely dense for the small area that, that it's in. That's one of my comments. And I'm very concerned about the congestion and the traffic. And anyone that frequents this area knows about the traffic and how bad it is right now, especially when it comes concerning the overpass there. That overpass is just not adequate for the amount of cars that's going over it, especially that left-hand turn lane, which is completely inadequate. Right now, it, the way it's designed, it, people move over to the left and they don't smoothly go down to make their turn. They actually kind of have to go down kind of like a step, which slows everyone down, each car that goes through there, causing all the traffic to back up behind. And only two cars seem to be getting in that left-hand portion of the lane at a time. And in the morning, or in the evening, when traffic is very heavy, it is quite annoying, and this, you know, has to be rectified. And I don't know how it can be, but of course, I, this is not my job, I'm not an engineer or so on. My third point is just kind of the aesthetic thing currently. Like I said, I live directly across this area where the pumpkin farm and the fun zone was for years. And at this time, it's completely becoming overgrown. There's porta potties that are over there that have been there for over a year, one of which is on its side and has been since earlier this year because of the storms. It's quite unpleasing to look at. And if anything can be done now, just to take care of that area, and I don't know who's responsible, I think many of us would really appreciate it. So again, you know, my discussion is about the density of the project, the overpass, the, the traffic, which is already terrible right now. Just getting here tonight was pretty crummy. And the, the site right now, the way it looks. Thank you.
Now we'll have Laura Wood, followed by Susan Mannheimer.
I'm Laura Wood, I live in the Parkside neighborhood, and I'm a member of Shoreview Parkside Neighborhood Association. Ideally, this land would have been saved for a park if we had the foresight as a community and as a city, because it's a very special property. People have spent generations celebrating here and have fond memories of the fish market, and also the view is fantastic. We've lost a lot of public spaces in our neighborhood due to closed schoolyards, closed recreation center, a closed playing field in North Shoreview. So there's not a lot of places for people to congregate or kids. And the park over there, Seal Park, right over there, the Aquatic Park, is really overrun most of the year because we have such a lack of green space. So I'm hoping that this project will be, have access, safe access. I don't think a five-foot path is safe, especially if you have two strollers side by side, or a cyclist and an older person with a walker. I also have mentioned to the developer before that this is a bus spot at the fish market, which not, not a lot of people notice, but a lot of people use. It's also a very pedestrian-heavy neighborhood, and bicyclists, and kids, and dogs. So you kind of have to vision, envision this space with a lot of dogs, strollers, bicyclists, and older people coming for the paper, which is a big event in the neighborhood, which the paper boxes right at this space. The library needs an overhaul with the landscaping in the front. It's a lost opportunity for people to access the bayfront. So maybe the Parks Department could work with them to make this more of a seamless transition from the development to the library. And I would also say that maybe the developer would open the space for community meetings, or the rooftop deck for the public to use, because it is super dense in this neighborhood. And we've added a lot of ADUs in the neighborhood. If you looked at the numbers, it's really gone up. There's very little parking, and a lot of people walk to and from Bridgepoint, the library, and the neighborhood all the time, and also the, the shopping center across the street. And it's not a safe neighborhood to cross the street at any of those intersections right at this corner. So those are all things that I think that we need to consider when we're building this. You know, just access and the popularity of the lagoon. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, and I just, I would like to ask staff, do we have any other hands raised online before we hear from our next speaker?
We do not, it's still the one.
Okay, so with that, I'll, I'll close. Any, any additional hands will not be taken, so thank you. And please, our next speaker.
Hi, thank you, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Susan Mannheimer, I'm the retired police chief for the city, and I wanted to comment on three things, all regarding security. And the first is that if you haven't been there, we're talking about one block, basically. It's one block from a Caltrans property that's been historically, and even from the photos you've seen now, not only neglected and abandoned, but Caltrans has a lot of other issues, including all of the right-of-way underneath the overpasses, which are just across the street and behind the Parkside Shopping Center. Historically, we have had probably 20 years of battle and struggle with Caltrans to erect gates and fences there and keep them erected. Every time those gates and fences are down, you have loitering, littering, dumping, opportunistic thieves, and it's really become a mess. So we know the history when you have 24-hour access in that area, particularly if you saw that area just to the south of where this path, this block-long path will be, this block-long path that will go nowhere, basically, because on the one side, you have the Caltrans property and the 19th Avenue culvert coming into the lagoon. On the other side, you have about 50 residential houses, all worth significant amounts of money and investment. So for this block, we're thrilled that it would be open and nice public access during the day. We know that we're not going to have lighting there at night, because Harbor Town, the residents of the building, as well as the lagoon, would suffer from that lighting at night. So to have this open to the public 24/7, when we already have the history of what happens in that area, when you have areas that, A, you cannot see from the street, so there's no patrolling, there's no eyes on for crime prevention through environmental design, and just safety and security in general. Almost every park is closed from dawn to dusk, or 10:00 AM to 6, 6, 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, whatever those hours are, because nothing really good happens after dark, when you can't have some kind of monitoring, surveillance, or at least some kind of security measures like lighting and other things. So I think at the end of the day, I think, if we want to have the access during the day, which we all believe will be a benefit to the public and to the community, we have got to have that closed off at night. The reason's to not do it, because someone will think it's a gated community. I mean, you saw the arches, I'm certain we could put up signs that say, "Welcome and open to all, please come enjoy our beautiful bayfront," or whatever we want to say there. That does not and should not preclude the issues of safety and security, which we apply to all other parks and residential areas. Certainly, we would not want to have these residents in that building have different levels of security than we're affording the rest of our community. And I think the last thing I'd like to say is that if we think there's going to be some large boating community there, I saw an egret walking across the entire lagoon yesterday. There, unless we have dredging, there's not going to be many of any boats, much less kayaks. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Rich Kranz, followed by Danielle Shuriko Gadiri.
Good evening, folks. My name's Rich Kranz, 33-year resident, recently retired United Airlines pilot, and very interested and invested in our, our community. First of all, thanks for all the hard work and measured approach you guys have taken. We all, we all appreciate that a lot. So, couple of things, noise. Aquatic Park, I live across from it, I've been in conversation with Mr. Greenie's office, is interesting. Between the fireworks, the loud radios and noise during the day, and the congregation at night, it's an attractive nuisance. And I'm trying to understand, like, been to Bearsford- And I'm trying to understand, like, been to Bearsford, friends live up there, you guys do a pretty good job up there, but Aquatic Park suffers. It's supposed to be closed at dusk, it's not. And I'm just hoping that doesn't, by extension, apply to this open area. You know, we want to trust you guys, but we have to see demonstrated behavior that you know how to do this. Anyway, in building, there's an axiom, you can have any three, you can have cheap, quality, and you know where I'm going with this. The concrete walkway around the building is cheap and it's fast. It's like an office building or like the back of a Hilton Hotel. There's an option three I'd like you to consider. If you look just across the way at Harbor Town, a lot of times architecturally, if you mirror what's going on over here, over here, it's actually pretty attractive. And if you look at what Harbor Town got approval and built, was that walkway around Harbor Town, you could actually move the walkway out to the edge of the lagoon in the marshy area, where you'd never go anyway. And it would be wide enough, it would be beautiful, could be a dock area, and it would give you more green space and less concrete. It should be gorgeous. So I just ask you to consider that. It's option number three. Not a public speaker, sorry. I don't know if it's in your wheelhouse, but the traffic on 19th, I came over here tonight on 19th just to give it a whack. It's like Christmas time, 24, Pulte is now built out, they're starting to rent, when this place gets rented out, the traffic on 19th is going to be pretty unbearable. I looked at the flow element, and I would hope that, probably not you guys, but other departments would honor the element that talks to flow. If you want to have people enjoying this beautiful space, they have to be able to get to it. So talked to a traffic engineer as much as I could get for free, for a cup of coffee. He looked down 19th and he sees, they're called bents, the things that hold 92 up, and then the creek on the other side. And his cup of coffee opinion is, I don't see how you're going to widen this, how you're going to mitigate traffic, but I'll leave that to smarter minds. Anyway, thank you so much for your time.
Oh. My name is Danielle Sorkogidzky. I'm the president of the Shoreview Parkside Neighborhood Association. I just want to second the comments by Susan Mannheimer tonight. I think it's really important that we do have a pedestrian walkway, but it does need to be safe. I also just want to really urge everyone to consider the spot on the lagoon and boating access. So that particular area of the lagoon has been listed of one of three by the Department of Public Works for critical spot dredge. And so I don't see how we'll get recreational use out of it without a public benefit for dredging. So just want to point that out. Thank you.
Now I'll call Amy Jessel Bedard, followed by Karen Moen.
Hi, thank you. I live over by the Joinville Park area, and we use that a lot. And I wanted to echo, actually, Rich Kranz in saying, along Harbor Town. We tend to walk all the way around. In fact, we call it the loop, starting from Joinville and going around. If we have that cutoff where we can't get all the way around, it's going to be definitely an impact on the community. Everybody gets together and walks and does that regularly. We're losing a lot of our park space and we all miss it. The lagoon is a very special place, and I won't get into the whole thing with echoing on the safety and the traffic, but those are both huge, huge issues. I can speak to safety in Joinville. I am on the board for Mariners Island, number, MGA number one is what it's called. And at night, even though it is gated and they close it down, we get, every morning, I come out and I pick up, you name it, from the junk food wrappers to the booze to the stuff, it's just all thrown out to the side. And every morning, on my way to the dog park, I clean up. And it's like, you know, no matter what we do, people are people, right? It's very frustrating. So we do have to find a way of mitigating that, and I echo that with the safety. I love what Parks and Rec is trying to do. I totally agree with Summer's comments and Staff's comments about needing the wider path. I really liked Rich's idea of a yes and, you know, expand the green by being able to put in sort of a Harbor Town walkway, which would be able to take you down closer to the lagoon and still make it around. Those of us that are not keen on having this density and smashed-in housing anyway are all looking forward to. Our entire community is pretty upset by it, because the gridlock, as it is, we can't get people over to the 19th Avenue side from our side. You literally could go to San Francisco quicker. It's a 35-minute romp, and that's not even during the school hours with Fiesta Gardens spilling out and the other various Sunny Bay communities, et cetera. So you can't get back and forth, so we'll leave that to the traffic mitigation studies, since this is a Parks and Rec meeting. But thank you for your time. The lagoon is a real precious area, and I'd love to see it as more of a park educational area where people could, you know, hang out.
Karen Moen.
My name is Karen Moen. I live at 1056 Shoreline Drive in Harbor Town, as does my neighbor Susan Mannheimer. I have been selected as, by our Board of Trustees, or Harbor Town Board, to be, to work on a committee of our residents who have worked with the developer, because we are immediately impacted by what goes on across the lagoon. Others have talked about the security issues, some of the landscaping issues, but I also wanted to talk about, I would certainly hate to see a default to high-intensity security lighting. That's something that we worked with the developer, because light pollution and noise pollution are serious factors along the lagoon. Light pollution impacts residents at Edgewater Isle, Harbor Town, around the whole area. It also impacts the environment of the lagoon itself. We have a real problem with the fact that we have serious weeds growing in the lagoon already. We have a serious dredging problem there. Anything related to boating, there must be dredging done before anything else happens. But the light and sound pollution are major issues, and we have worked with the developer and have been very pleased with some of the modifications they've made there. Of course, we would all prefer a park over high-density housing there. However, the city did not choose to invest in parkland in that area, and so we, this is what we have. I will say, Harbor Town does have a path that actually leads to somewhere. You can go all the way to Oracle on the pathway through that area. In Harbor Town, the pathway is about two and a half feet wide, and it serves our community and all of the walkers who use that area very, very well. So I don't think that, to say that if it's less than six feet or eight feet, or whatever number of feet you want to do, that you're going to be creating an extra problem, because our community already has a much narrower one. Preservation of the banks is extremely important. I also serve on our landscape committee. This is brackish water in this area. Plants do not thrive by and large in brackish water. And so one of the things that we need to be very careful about is not having an expectation that this is suddenly going to become a jungle-like greenbelt in the area, because plants do not thrive in this area. It's careful selection and so forth. We also don't want more leaves dropping into the lagoon, so thank you very much. And we do appreciate this opportunity to speak.
Tasso Sografos, if you'll please unmute yourself.
Thank you. I echo the sentiments of the first speaker. There are many in our community who have expressed their concerns about this development, and that, those expressions of concern are going to grow. People feel this development is way out of proportion for that particular parcel, and that other uses should have been considered for that land space. The impacts of that development are not just directly affecting those who live near it, but they affect us all in San Mateo, because we travel, we visit people in the area, we shop in the area, and we enjoy the waterways and the pathways that should be public accessible. And so I think you're going to see more and more folks expressing concerns, far more than those who are supportive of the project. And it's sort of disturbing to see that this project is moving along without a lot of the feedback that's been presented today taken into account. The, this commission is supposed to be a champion of open public space for public good and public enjoyment, but I haven't seen a lot of championing of that in this meeting. This feels like a rubber stamp of just kind of checking the box and moving this thing along and saying, "We discussed it and we had some fruitful discussion about the public space," and Park and Rec Commissioners sort of checked the box and moved it along. I mean, the notion that some of the key comments were surrounding about what kind of plants might be planted there, when there isn't enough public space made available because of the monstrosity of the development. So I would have preferred some of the public, sorry, some of the commissioners actually challenged that there wasn't enough open space and to actually fight for that. Secondly, there was discussion about possibly looking into the future of expanding the pathway. Well, why not expand it today? Why not make that open space more available and condense the size of the project to that, to a proportion that makes sense for that land space? I think you're going to see growing public comment against this development, and I'm hoping that those in a position, serving the public, will take all that sentiment into account as this thing moves forward. Thank you.
And with that, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Now we're taking, I just want to say really thank you to everyone who made a public comment. Your comments are heard and appreciated. It's really a great act of citizenship to participate in local government, and I just personally want to say thank you. With that, now we'll bring it back to the commission. Let's hear from Commissioner Wallnick first. I saw her take a lot of notes, so I think she's ready for her comments.
Okay, so I, first, I just want to remind everyone that we are just looking at the, what is before us on the agenda. And so while all of those comments, you know, are heard by our staff, they're not necessarily for our commission. So I did hear issues with safety and security on opening the path at night, and I do take the comments about the Aquatic Park and the issues that are there, and wonder if perhaps creating more of the gathering spaces in this space, which is behind the building, might actually draw more people in that way. I guess I jumped over my first comment, which is, I'm not a huge fan of having someone open and close a gate like this every day. I think there's too many, too much room for it not happening, for mistakes to happen, spaces to be closed off. So I think if it's going to be an open space, it should be an open space. I am very interested, this is a little bit beyond, but what's happening with that library site, because I feel like that's a really great opportunity for the city to provide some more of the green space at that library site. And I also am very supportive of the forward-thinking of the continuing path here. I think the path on the other side of the lagoon is wonderful and very well-used, goes under the Fashion Island and continues on, and I'd love to see more of that in our city. I'm intrigued by the idea of moving the path closer to the lagoon to create some more space, so I'd encourage that to be discussed and thought through. And I think, I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wallnick. Commissioner Massey, comments from you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate both the presentations of the planning department and the applicant. I think they illustrated well some of the issues that this development presents, and the public comments, some of which, as Commissioner Wallnick alluded to, some of which are simply beyond our purview, issues of density, traffic, those sorts of things are just not for our commission. Where our involvement in this is limited, so I won't comment on those things, but I do want to acknowledge that those comments have been heard and received, it's simply that we are not, it's not our role in this to take on those issues that belong with the planning commission. Some of the issues that I saw as we were going through this, we've got the question of the gates and whether the space should be available 24/7 or not. The concern I had about all of this is, there's been a lot in the news about buildings and projects where there is publicly available open space incorporated as part of the project, and nobody knows that it's there. And it isn't so much that anybody's trying to keep the public out, it's simply that nobody has really put any effort into, or had any particular interest in letting the public know that this is there and encouraging them to come. And I think there's a little bit of an issue with, along those lines, with this. I agree strongly with Susan Mannheimer that the security concerns around this simply preclude option two. And I don't even think the developer really believes in option two either. I think you're handing us option two because you're saying that, well, look, okay, if you won't let us have option one, this is what we've got to do. And I, you know, I'm in agreement with that outlook. I think option one is the only reasonable thing to look at. And then we can look at that and say, well, we don't like it because, and we should make the path wider, or we should put it in a different place, or less amenities and more walk space, or, you know, there are all those things around it, but it's got to be option But I think that some more thought should be given to the, to this, to this issue of, how are we going to let the public know that this space is really for them? And it's nice to have an artway, and it's nice to have a cafe there, but it seems to me that if I, as just sort of a casual passerby, sees this, I'm going to look at it and say, well, what a nice pathway they have for the apartment residents. And I think we've got to overcome that somehow. I don't have any great ideas on how to do this. You know, our role in this is limited, but I think it's for the developer and for the planners to think this through a little more than seems to have been done so far. And I think in that context, not to spend a whole lot more time thinking about option two, because it just is not, it just seems to be not feasible. Wider path versus amenities, I think the developer has brought up a good point. That way, there is a limited amount of space. I, like Commissioner Wallnick, I mean, I'm really intrigued by this idea of pushing out into this marsh area. I assume, I have, I'm not familiar with the area, but I'm but I'm assuming that the pathway that Harbor Town uses must be some sort of a deck that, you know, rises above the marsh. I think, yeah, think about it. Maybe that's something that should happen again. That's for the developer and the planners to, to, to think about. And also maybe think through a little more this question of a wider path versus amenities. Amenities are nice, but space is nice too. I'm sure that, you know, most, if not all of you, are familiar with the, the levee in Foster City. And there aren't many amenities. The new version of it has more than they used to have, but, but that pathway on the weekends, it is full. And, you know, I guess I would come down more on the side of space. But again, it's, it's something that has to be thought through. Nobody has talked much tonight about this issue of dredging. And I saw in the packet and I heard here and there tonight about, in passing about dredging. I don't understand what dredging may or may not happen. And I really don't, and I have no idea what the impact of this dredging might be on the views, the open space, or the interface between the users of the pathway and the lagoon. And that, I think, needs to be thought through in more detail. Nobody's talked much about the shadow study. You know, there, again, there's been a lot of news about these sorts of issues where housing developments have been, have been denied because of shadow issues. And I guess my own opinion is, I think we do have to talk, think about and talk about housing needs when we're talking about something like shadows and question whether or how important it is that a particular area is shadowed for a period of time in midwinter as opposed to 260 units of housing, of which, I forget, 20 some odd were, are going to be for very low income. Other than that, I did notice in terms of the, of the, of the pathway, the comment that the Harbor Town path, which apparently is admired, is only two and a half feet wide. And somehow, is that how, it's five? Okay, well, then it's five. I don't know. I don't, I don't mean to get into a discussion about, about that. It's simply that maybe we, you know, query whether we really need a wider path or not, but that's something that's got to be thought through. That's really our, those are the issues I saw. I think, I think some more thought needs to be given to some of these things. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Massey. Commissioner Kaiafe, comments from you.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to thank the Planning Commission, as well as Mike Fields, for your presentation. And I'd like to thank everybody who's come here today to make comments and to listen in. It shows your commitment to your community and to the city. I have a few comments about the security and the issue about the gates. I do know that gates tend to deter people from accessing public spaces or even private spaces, but I do also understand the need for security, especially at the nighttime. So perhaps a middle ground could be making visible the accessways. If they're going to be gates, I think it would be imperative that there be clear signage that is visible to the public and the public be actively made aware that there is actually a pathway. And then in terms of the size of the trail, I do understand that it's probably because of space limitations. But at the same time, I also know that the wider the space, the easier it is for, for example, parents with like strollers or bikes or even people with disabilities, the elderly who need more space to walk through pathways, it would make it easier for them to access the walkway. And then in terms of the, the shadow study, I know that during the, the winter, I think it was said that part of the library would be covered by the shadow. And knowing that sometimes the sun is really important, especially in the winter for vitamin D, we really want to promote health among ourselves the best way that we can. So maybe some thought could be, some, I think we should look into that, especially with the library, because I know children and the community really uses the library. So if the library is not getting enough sun due to the building, I don't know what options there would be, but that's really something which is of concern to me. I think those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have a few comments, really echoing a lot of what my other fellow commissioners have already suggested. You know, I think there is a real need for clear signage, that it really needs to act as an invitation in. Similar to Commissioner Wolnick, I, I want to say that I have some hesitancy around fencing what is meant to be a public space, that it can frankly feel less inviting to people. But that being said, you know, the, the courtyard in Station Park Green that is publicly accessible is really not accessed by very many people at all. And that's not even fenced, it's just the, the way of the architecture of the, of the buildings, frankly, encloses it in a way that, that it's just not used very much. So, so really thinking about, and I think that, you know, the renderings, I think, show this, but perhaps Windy Hill can, can work on this a little bit more, making sure that the fencing is both attractive and utilitarian in that, you know, I, I understand the security concerns. You know, the water isn't particularly deep, but certainly someone could do something dumb at night and, you know, hurt themselves. And that's obviously the last thing we would want in that site. So I understand there's both a safety and security concern about nighttime access that I think is reasonable. And so like Commissioner Massey said, I think option one really is the option, but perhaps with some adjustments and tweaks. So again, clear signage, you know, the, the noise concerns around aquatic park. Certainly, if you're, if you're experiencing inappropriate noise at night, I see that our current chief, Barbarini, is here. I'm sure he would love for you to call his officers. I would second the, the option to look into significant connectivity to the library. There could be some kind of partnership, I think, with the library to really highlight that this is public space. You know, we're a high-functioning city here in San Mateo, and so different parts of San Mateo talk to each other. And that's not true in every city. And so I think really making sure that, that the library works to promote the site and maybe even does activities where you maybe tour the, the site when it opens, some kind of activity with the library, I think, would be really, really a very special thing. And then also in terms of connectivity with other aspects of government, former Chief Manheimer had mentioned the Caltrans property. You know, we're very fortunate that our former council member and former mayor, Diane Pappin, is now our assembly member. And I'm sure also State Senator Becker's office would be very interested to help us to connect with Caltrans about that property. I've worked with their office in my day job, both of those offices, and been very successful. So certainly better connectivity to that Caltrans property, or I should say, better communication with that Caltrans property, which it sounds like has been protracted, is something that I think we need to be looking into. Dredging, I know, is very expensive, which I think is part of why maybe it didn't come up as much. But it sounds like if realistically, we really want to activate this space for boating activities, it, it really needs to be looked at. And maybe, maybe that's something to be developed out in the future. But it certainly needs to be looked at. If a, if a bird is walking across the water, it's just not very deep, which may be good for water safety. If you fall in, you're probably going to be okay, but a boat probably won't go too far. So really want to look into dredging. I do think an evening closure makes sense for all the reasons I mentioned earlier, which means I don't think there's a necessity for lights. Also, with respect to our neighbors at Harbor Town, you know, no one wants a bright light in their window. I completely understand that, and I hope that you enjoy the park without the, the issue of lights. The other thing is, I don't think it was quite ever articulated, but it seemed to be alluded to several times. If there are unhoused people around the site or near the site who are living either in an extended way or periodically, San Mateo Police Department does have two homeless outreach workers. I know because I work for Life Moves. And so if there's a need to deploy those, those workers, again, you know, let us know, call. There's, you know, there's a non-emergency number for the police, which we can include in our minutes, because we do have those resources accessible locally. And, and I just want to remind that for everyone. That's an important resource that's available to all of us. And I think those are all of my comments. I just also want to say, I think this is a great opportunity. Along, this new development is a good opportunity to, to have open space. In San Mateo, we really haven't really taken advantage of our opportunities along the water. And I think this is a great opportunity to, to create open space where you can walk and enjoy yourself and, you know, maybe go to the library, go visit this café, catch up with a friend. And I hope that we're able to really make the most out of this opportunity. So with that, I will ask for any reports or announcements. Let's go to staff first, and then we'll hear from commissioners if there are any reports or announcements from commissioners. So, staff.
Thank you. I have a few project updates I'd like to share with the commission. And so Lily, if you could share a picture of some improvements we recently made at Parkside Aquatic Park. We replaced our benches, picnic tables, and barbecue furnishings recently. And so hopefully that is a welcomed upgrade at the park. We do have a couple of other projects that are happening. Washington Park Basketball Court renovations. The contract was recently approved by council at a meeting. We are finalizing our restroom refurbishing at Indian Springs Park to be completed by the end of the month. And we have a new family change facility at the King Pool, right off the deck. So very excited about all of those. We also are working on doing some improvements to our skate park out at Shoreview Park. And so I'm happy to have so many of you in the audience and participating online. Our survey will be up for several weeks for us to get feedback about the renovations out at Shoreview Park Skate Park. And then we will additionally have an outreach meeting on Thursday, October 26, from 5 to 7 out at the park, Shoreview Park. Wanted to also just remind everybody about our last two movies in the park this Friday at Shoreview Park, Super Mario Brothers, and September 29 at Central Park, Dungeons and Dragons. Also, just a reminder about the Strive San Mateo Draft General Plan Town Hall meetings. We have two left, one tomorrow, District Four, at Bayside School Old Gymnasium, as well as next Thursday, September 28, District Three, at Nueva School. So hope everybody can attend those. Wanted to just give a brief update on our two youth commissioners. So the recruitment has closed, and we'll be working on the selection process with the new members to hopefully join us before the end of the year. So more to come on that soon. And last but not least, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize our outgoing commissioner. Unfortunately, I did not know about his departure prior to the agenda being published, so was not able to include that in the ceremonial items, but would like to just read on our certificate of appreciation, if I may, just a little bit about Christopher Massey. An appreciation for your 17 years of service as a volunteer commissioner for the city of San Mateo. His role was as a volunteer in the city attorney's office, and then he became a member of the Housing Rehabilitation Loan Committee in June of 2006, followed by an appointment to the planning commission for two full terms, from June 2007 to June 2015. But he was not done with his public service yet. He then began service with the Park and Recreation Commission from September 2015 through September 2023. Through the years, he has demonstrated a deep caring for the community, an endless ability and desire to give back. His skill in winnowing complex problems to understandable and asking the right question at just the right time. He has been a difference maker in the community and will be missed. You've set the bar so high. Thank you for your service.
Wow, thanks, thanks to you. That was remarkably fast, and I have to apologize for that. It's that the circumstances of our move were such that we weren't doing it, and all of a sudden, we were, we're going to, my wife and I are going to be moving to the Spade to join family. And so we're going to leave San Mateo behind. We've lived here for 19 years. And before that, we lived in Foster City for over 20 years. So the peninsula is really, really home to us. But the rest of our family is over in Alameda, and so we're going to join them. And we will, we will miss everything about our life here, and I will, I will miss my city service. But I'm also a believer in the idea that, you know, we all have term limits for a reason. And I think there's, there's a time to serve, and there's a time to move on gracefully and, and bring, bring new people on to these boards and commissions. And so in that sense, it's not a bad thing. So I've, I want to, I want to thank my fellow commissioners. I've, I've enjoyed working with all of you. I'm sorry to Ms. Lindsay and some of the, the people who were on the commission, the Park Commission earlier on, who have themselves moved on. And to Joanne, who has done a great job so far of taking, taking on this department and filling some big shoes from, from Shilla. And I, I have every confidence that the city is going to continue to progress and that great things are going to be done. So thank you all very much.
Well, thank you for those words, Joanne and Commissioner Massey. I guess I'll sort of awkwardly ask, does staff have any other announcements or reports? I suspect no. No. Okay, great. I would like to hear if any of the commissioners have anything they would like to say or announce, or perhaps a word of thanks.
The appeal, I was asking you earlier about that.
Sorry, we will be, be bringing forward a tree appeal at the October 4 meeting. Thanks for the reminder. Sorry, I forgot.
Any other announcements or words from commissioners? No, no, seeing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Excellent. Adjourned.